Good evening and welcome to the City Council meeting of East Hampton, Massachusetts, Wednesday, July 6th, 2016. Can I have a roll call, please?
Dan Carey.
President.
Peg Connaught.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Jennifer Hayes.
Here.
J.P. Kozinski. Joe McCoy. Dan Rist.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
And can we stand for Pledge of Legions?
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Okay, any further discussion? You have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstention? One abstention.
Passes five votes.
Were you out?
I was the abstention. Yes, okay. And now, we would like to invite anyone from the public that would like to come up and speak before the council on issues not related to items on our public hearing tonight. Seeing none, I think we can move on to communications from elected officials, boards, and committees. I don't have any correspondence, so that'll take us right to Mayor Communications.
Salem, do you want me to just handle the Mayor Communications? When we get to that, under the ball fields, or?
That's under Mayor Communications.
It is under there, so maybe we can do the ball field now while you're up there.
Whatever it is more convenient, that's all. Good evening. And so, this is just a request to remove naming the ball fields, just to remove it from the agenda at this point in time. They do want to still go through with naming the ball fields, but what they like to do is they like to do it as part of their jamboree celebration in April, so they wanted to do the naming of it closer to that. And felt that by leaving it on the City Council agenda, you would have to keep getting extensions on it, and it just might be better to just pull it off and then put it back in there, maybe February, enough time to get a committee and the five members, and to name it.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilor.
I move that we remove the naming of the ball field in Section 3 of Annott Park from the council agenda without prejudice.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion? Okay, that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes. And that brings us to our reports of standing committees, and I believe that would bring us to Finance.
Mr. President, I have no report other than the public hearings, and there will be no meetings for the Finance Committee until September.
Okay, Public Safety.
We, thank you. We need to get together and figure out when our next meeting is going to be. We're considering the review of the Street Acceptance Protocol, and we also have a piece of new business. Would you like me to move that over in the Subcommittee now?
That would be great, thank you.
So, motion to move the request of no parking sign in the corner of Prospect Street and Pleasant Street to Public Safety.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or? Seeing none, passes. Any further, Counselor?
No, thank you. That concludes.
Okay, thank you. Appointments. Counselor Smith.
We were unable to meet a quorum this evening for the City Council Appointments Subcommittee, and I have three appointments, mayoral appointments, that need to be considered. I'm going to defer to Dan Rist because we had just spoken about possible alternatives to this.
Under the Charter, if we do not approve these appointments this evening, and I think we could meet as a council as a whole, as a committee, since the committee attempted to meet, we're fulfilling our obligation. If we don't approve them, they become, and I think we ought to speak our mind to them if we wish to. So I think it's appropriate for us to go ahead and talk about each of these appointments. They're pretty obvious, so I think we should just approve them or talk about it.
Sounds fair.
Okay, so the first appointment that I would like to make a motion to consider for reappointment is Barbara Lombombard for the Clerk for City Council with a term expiration of August 31st, 2018.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion?
She has been absolutely a jewel for the City Council. We're lucky to have Barbara.
I honestly don't think we could function without her, so.
Yes.
So that being said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions or against?
No.
Motion passes.
Okay, the second appointment is for Valerie Bernier, who is our City Auditor, and this is for a term expiration of September 1st, 2019. So I'd like to make a motion to move her name forward to the full committee for the appointment for City Auditor.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions or against? Seeing none, motion passes.
Okay, and the third appointment is for Hetal Patel, who is the Assistant City Auditor, and that's for a term expiration of September 1st, 2019. And this application came with a letter of support from Valerie Bernier for, let's see. Ms. Hetal Patel started on May 10th, 2016, as the new assistant and is doing an excellent job. I have appointed her with the Mayor's approval per MGL Chapter 41 and 49, and respectfully request that you appoint her along with my reappointment per City Charter Section 28. So I'd like to make a motion to move Hetal Patel to the position of Assistant City Auditor and move that for, towards the, sorry, move that for the entire City Council.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or no's? Seeing none, motion passes.
Okay, and my last point of business is I would like to move that Rachel Phillips, who has applied for the position of being in the ECA Plus Committee with a term expiration of 12/31/18, be moved to the Appointments Subcommittee for consideration.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against or abstentions? Okay, motion passes.
Okay, and because the other two members of the Appointments Subcommittee is not here, I can't set a following date since I will not be here during the next City Council meeting, so to be announced.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. An ordinance, we have not met in a couple weeks, so the ordinance, next meeting will be a week from tonight at 6:00 PM here at 50 Payson, in a place where Barbara will tell us.
What's the date of that?
The 13th, July 13th.
At what time?
6:00 PM. And at that time, we are going to focus less on plastic bag, which we are going to meet at a different date to discuss that, but we're going to be looking at the sign ordinance and the food truck ordinance. So those are the two items that are going to be on our agenda. I believe it is the 20th, it is, July 20th, we will have an informational and educational meeting around single-use plastic bags, and that is going to be here at 6:00 PM. And that concludes my report. Property.
Our chair is not here. We just.
Yeah, so we met a couple weeks ago. We have a request for an easement on a purchase of a building at 2 Caldoff Street. And just want to give you some background. During the course of the sale, and in order to, I believe, clear title, they found and discovered that there were two pieces of property contained in the sale that are not accounted for. There is a sewer area for access to a sewer that would be, unless this easement is granted to the city by the buyer, there would be an area which would not necessarily have easy access for us to get into the sewer area. That is one easement that the city wants from the buyer. Then there's another easement that the buyer wants from the city, which abutting up to the building is a parking lot. Part of that parking lot containing some number of parking spaces belongs to the city, and that abuts up to the rail trail. They don't really intersect, they've been there for 20 years the way they are, and there's been no problem with it whatsoever. So the parking area is the easement requested by the buyer of the city, the sewer easement is being requested of the city, so, but, from the buyer. So the meeting was held in Subcommittee, and we went over the pros and cons ad nauseam on what the two pieces of property would be. The paperwork and the costs for both easements will be borne by the purchaser. The city will not have to spend any money on the easement. So we had the motion to bring this forward to the full council with a two-to-one vote for approval. So two counselors agreed that this was a good mix of the easements, it was a good agreement that they had put in place. One counselor disagreed. That counselor, J.P. Kozinski, also has submitted a statement that he wants read into the record tonight regarding this, and then pending any questions from anyone, I will make a motion. Okay? Tamara?
I think maybe before we read the minority report, we can hear from some.
I would like, Mr. President, I would like, as a point of order, that we read the minority report first, so that the Mayor and anyone else who would like to speak to the minority report would be able, so we all heard it first.
Fair enough.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind. So if Counselor Smith, I think, has to report the minority report.
Okay, the statement reads, "Since I am vacation, on vacation, I have asked for the statement to be read to the counselors. Before, this is an opportunity to be fiscally responsible on behalf of East Hampton. As much as I would like to see the city gain an easement for the sewer line at 2 Caldoff Street, as a real estate professional, I am unwilling to vote for two easements that are not of equal value. The 18 to 20 parking spaces are worth much more than the sewer easement. Therefore, I strongly recommend that before taking any action on this proposal, the council formally request the administration to hire a professional real estate appraiser to assure that the city does not sell itself short. It is my professional opinion that we should be asking for compensation in the amount of $2,000 per year. In these tough financial times, I'm sorry, in these tough fiscal times, $2,000 is just too much money to be giving up each year. Sincerely, J.P. Kozinski."
And that's the end of the statement.
Okay.
Okay.
Now we can hear from the Mayor.
First of all, I would also thank the Property Subcommittee for putting together two meetings very close to each other to try to address these easements, knowing that, you know, with a purchaser or a sale, how timely things are. So I'd like to thank you for, you know, pulling that together and going over detail, and I know you viewed the site, and it was a lot of information to cover in the two meetings. Before that point in time, this originally came to our, this request originally came to our City Attorney. It started out when the buyer's attorney was doing the title search, and then at their cost, a survey of the property was done. So it came to our City Attorney's attention, who brought it to our DPW Director's attention and also to mine. And so he worked diligently, like, I can tell you, Joe will be able to give you in-depth detail as to what we feel the value and the importance to the easement on our end is, and I know Joe can give you much more in-depth detail on that. But I can tell you that the buyer's attorney, the seller's attorney, and our City Attorney worked on this for quite a while before, you know, it got to the stages where we knew it was going to be an easement, which we feel, you know, two easements, one that the city needs and one that the property owners' needs was a win-win for all of us. I can also give you a little bit of history on easements. I know we've just done some easements, and they do consider parking with our Mills Projects, and there was no charges incurred for those. There is one that I believe J.P., Counselor Kozinski, was thinking about in the past, and that was when the, at that time it was called the Tri-County School, was building a new school and needed the property, which is very different than an easement that had been using, you know, that property that had been used for a long time by the owners. So any questions, please don't hesitate, and I think that our DPW Director can answer a lot of it.
Counselor.
I have a question for you and the DPW. First of all, if I understand this correctly, Counselor Connaught, we're swapping easements, so there's already a benefit to the city in a sense of a barter. We're getting something, we're not giving away an easement for nothing. We're getting something in return. So I don't know if I agree with Counselor Kozinski's contention that we're giving away something, but am I correct? We are getting an easement.
That is exactly our stance.
That we need this easement.
That is exactly our stance, and again, I think Joe can tell you the importance. But what happened when we were originally contacted, Joe went out to view the property for the easement purposes, and that's when he found that we have a sewer pipes that are directly on their property, and we need a sewer easement there. So that's when it became, well, that's great, you know, this is a property that, you know, we would be able to grant them an easement, but now we need one. And the value that we place on them, it also went before the Board of Public Works, and the Board of Public Works voted that they would like both easements to occur, and that they felt that, you know, a swap, the city doing one easement and the buyers basically doing, buyer-sellers doing another, was, you know, a perfect.
Equitable.
A perfect setup. But I think if you listen on our end.
I'd like to hear Joe.
I think Joe's going to tell you, and, you know, you almost hate playing your hand, but he's going to tell you the value on our end.
Okay. So, Joe, this is quite necessary.
This is quite necessary. We talk about a sewer line, we actually call this a sewer interceptor. This is a trunk line. This runs all the way from the bike path, all the way from Remelco Way, all the way down to around those apartments where it comes off of the bike path and goes very close to the buildings, between five and eight feet away from their building. So if we have to get in there, we're basically working right next to their building. So we, an easement is necessary. I make the point, and I made the point at Subcommittee, if they were to build porches or overhangs or something, and we had to get in there, we'd have to take this down. Then we'd have to rebuild it for them. If we have an easement, that says we can get in there and work on it whenever we want. This takes all the waste, all the sewage from, say, Glendale Street to the Southampton Line, and runs it down there, and at that point, like I said, it comes off the bike path, it runs down Caldoff Street, and then comes to Williston Ave, and then it goes this way. This is a very important piece of pipe. For us to have a pipe that's that size that's so close to private property, if we have a chance to get an easement, this is, this is a win-win.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear. Counselor.
I wanted to make another comment relative to what J.P. said about $2,000 a year. And maybe that, in his mind, is the value, but I'm not sure where we would get this $2,000 from, who would be paying it, because I'm fairly certain that the buyers would not pay it, because they've made it very clear that should we not give them the easement, they don't need that parking area. They have other areas that they can park it. So would it be the case that we decided that, yes, it makes more sense to keep the parking area and charge and get $2,000 a year back from the buyer? They would just say, no, thank you, and walk away. They've made that pretty clear.
So with that scenario, we would have a very difficult time legally getting access to the sewer line, is what I'm hearing.
Without an easement for that.
Right.
Yep.
And obviously, they've said that they won't give you $2,000. You have that on record.
They said that they won't need the parking lot.
Right, so, and this easement does not need, these easements trade-offs don't need to happen in order for the sale to come through. If I'm hearing that correctly, they can walk away from this easement swap and still have a sale. Am I correct on that?
I believe that.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, so, because what you're saying is if we say no, they're going to say, well, okay, we'll put the parking somewhere else.
Right, okay.
But then we still won't have an easement.
We're still out of it.
Settles my opinion. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Yeah.
Anybody else, before we have a motion? So I guess I'd be willing to entertain a motion.
Motion to accept the deal is structured between the DPW.
Oh, you got it. Yeah, there's a wording here thing. Do we need to respond to his request for?
No, he's read our minority report. I mean, that's pretty close.
Okay, I just wanted to understand that. Okay, I move to approve the easement agreements between the City of East Hampton and Pansione Associates Regional Realty LLC, and to grant parking/landscape easement to said Pansione Associates, and to accept a 20-foot-wide sanitary sewer easement from said Pansione Associates in exchange, all for the purposes of obtaining a sewer line easement for an existing sewer line located on property owned by said Pansione Associates on Caldoff Street, East Hampton, Massachusetts.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to say that this seems like a win-win, and I don't, I do respect Counselor Kozinski's real estate knowledge, and his decision, though, is based on an appraisal which we'd have to pay for, which I don't feel is necessary. There's another factor in that if we say no, regardless of the appraisal, the owners aren't going to accept this. And to me, not having access to a very vital sewer line is very important, and we are getting something, we are getting an easement for giving up some property. So I don't think we're losing value. So I urge the council to say yes to this.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or no's? Seeing none, motion passes. And at this time, we are a little bit past our time for our public hearing, so I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, looks like we have a supplemental appropriation to start us off.
Yes, we have a supplemental appropriation submitted by the CPA, which, of which I am also the chair of. This is a rather no-brainer. This is an affordable housing appropriation. It was approved as an affordable, proper submission on affordable housing. The Housing Authority has a number of units which are supporting senior citizens, and they have requested stove-top fire suppressors, so that when the senior, and I can attest to the fact that I've done it, leaves the burning pot on the stove and they walk away, they won't burn up the apartment in themselves. The CPA voted unanimously for this, and we granted them a little extra money so they could buy extras, because once this suppressor fires, it's a CO2 explosion, it has to be replaced, so then the authority will have extras to go in. This is very much supported by the Fire Department, and very much supported by the CPA, and I urge the counselors to say yes to this. I think it will, might save some lives.
Okay, any questions from the counselors? Any questions from the public? Comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I will read this as a second reading. A supplemental appropriation request has been made for the following appropriation: $8,000 to be appropriated from the CPA Reserved for Affordable Housing account. $8,000 to be appropriated to affordable housing for stove-to fire, I'm sorry, stove-top fire suppressors. For the Housing Authority, $8,000. For the following purpose: To fund the purchase and installation of stove-top fire suppressors in all dwelling units managed by the East Hampton Housing Authority. I move that we accept this appropriation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seems like a no-brainer. I agree. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions or no's? Motion passes.
Okay, next one.
Okay, it looks like we have, the next one is, "A proposal to amend the city ordinances, Chapter 2 Administration, Article 2, elected officials by replacing the existing sections 2.17 and 2.18 with new salary scales." Counselor.
The Finance Committee met and voted three to zero to have what we consider a modest increase in salaries for the council and for the school committee. Just to update everyone, every time there is a new council elected, the first term we are required by Charter, the Finance Committee, to review elected officials, stipends, boards, and committees. The Finance Committee in the previous term voted to give the Mayor a raise and decided that this time the City Council should be considered. And taking that up, since, I think Counselor Kozinski, Counselor McCoy, and myself were on the committee the last time, and we all remembered that discussion. In reviewing this, we reviewed the documents that were provided, thankfully, by the clerk, showing many cities and towns, most of whom are well above our council salaries. Just looking at Northampton, they have $9,000 salary, $10,000 for the council president, and the school committee gets $5,000. Now, some would argue that they have a larger budget, therefore they should be paid more. My personal comment on this is that I don't serve, as a City Counselor, to get paid. I serve because I feel that I can make a difference and that I have a responsibility to my community because I can contribute. I have knowledge that I think I can contribute. But we all need to remember that we're paid also for our responsibility. Our responsibility to be a check and balance on the administration, on finance especially, is the same responsibility as Boston, or Northampton, or anybody else. They have more people, but the same responsibility, when we make a decision that affects the residents in the City of East Hampton, we make the same kind of decision that a Northampton Counselor would make. That being said, the counselors at the time did not feel, given both of those sides of the equation, that a large, which was suggested that we get a fairly large raise, was necessary, and I was not in favor of that. So we did vote a modest raise of $1,000. It's been eight years since any increase happened. That $1,000 for us, and I think it was $500 for the school committee, adds $12,000 to the budget for fiscal year, for the fiscal year for the next term. This begins January 2018, and where that fiscal year would be half a year, okay? So that's important to note. When we vote on this, we are not voting for our own raises, we have to run for reelection. So that's important for the residents to know. So the Finance Committee did vote for this, three to zero. I entertain any questions?
Any questions from counselors? Any questions from the public? Comments? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
I will read two motions. First is to approve a change in the ordinance of Section 217 School Committee Salary in accordance with the Home Rule Charter, Section 41E. The annual salary of six elected members of the school committee shall be $1,400 per member, effective January 2nd, 2018. I move that we approve this change in Section 217.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have a quick question. How often does the school committee meet? Once a month?
Once a week, once, twice a month, I think.
Very similar.
I.
We have a motion on the table.
It is about the same as us.
Right. And how often does the?
Yeah, Dan can answer.
And how often does the retirement board meet?
We're not entertaining their salary. I don't understand why.
We just recently decided to pay the retirement board $3,000 a year, so I'm just trying to see that volume of work between those two committees.
As I'll state, I don't, I don't know how to answer that question, because I don't know the retirement board's meeting schedule, but as I recall, that was, that was a raise that was similar to others in the retirement systems, and that we aren't, as I said, for our council, we are not being paid for the time we spend, because a lot of, there's different variations on what council responsibilities are, or school committee, or retirement board. We're being paid for responsibility. So I think that our responsibility is why we should get a raise. It is not about how long it takes us to do our job. That's just my opinion. I can't answer the question on a retirement board. Sorry.
As I recall, when we, when we did talk about the retirement board, I think one of the things that stood out for me when we were talking about their raises was their fiduciary responsibility was so great with the fund that they had to manage for the retirement and the city employees was pretty dramatic, and they're doing an outstanding job. I mean, they're doing better than a lot of towns in terms of the value of it and taking care of it, so, I mean, it was a no-brainer, really, as far as I was concerned, for them. So, you know, it's millions of dollars, and they're handling it pretty well day to day, so I didn't have a problem with that one. Right, thank you.
Any further discussion related to the school committee salary increase? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or against? Seeing none, motion passes.
I will read in a form of a motion. I move that the City Council approve section, a change in Section 218 of our ordinances under City Council's salary in accordance with Home Rule Charter, Section 2-4A. The annual salary of the City Council shall be $4,000 per member, effective January 2nd, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions or against? Okay, motion passes.
Mr. President, I move the public hearings to be closed.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearings. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It is closed. So we're going to pick right back up with a report from Rules and Government Relations.
Mr. President, I'm going to make a motion to extend our defined scope of mission statements, because I wasn't prepared to present that this evening. I'd like to extend that for 60 days. Well, I'm going to extend it until September 2016, because I don't know how many days that is.
Okay.
Or whatever that is. I'd like to make a motion that council accept that.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to extend the deadline for defining the scope and creating mission statements for the subcommittees until September 2016. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And since Councillor Kozinski is one of the people that asked for some editing, I'd be better if he was here, and I promise to bring them forward next time. Sorry.
Okay. And I will take the next piece of business, as there is some action that is required. I did, Councillor McCoy asked me to report out that the ad hoc naming committee for naming the boardwalk in honor of Michael and Deborah Tautznik has met, and at their first meeting, they have requested that they be resolved, as it was the former mayor's intention to maybe find a different way to honor his late wife. And so I'm bringing that forward to formally, in the form of a motion, ask to disband the ad hoc committee for naming the boardwalk in honor of Michael and Deborah Tautznik without prejudice.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Since this was requested by a properly submitted petition, I'm interested to know if the committee members felt that the petitioners would be okay with this.
I believe that ...
Or that they would respect, of course, Mike's feeling.
I believe that at least some of those petitioners were present at the meeting, and they did vote unanimously, four to zero, to dissolve the official boardwalk naming committee.
Well, I think we should respect the former mayor Tautznik's opinion, so certainly in favor of it.
And, okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So we have no more naming committees?
No more naming committees. We have, tonight was the night of taking down the naming committees. And we did our new business for mayoral appointments, and did we do ...
We did.
The new business for ...
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
So I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Beautiful.
Do we have to sign our ...
One thing.
We have to sign everything. Voted for Raven.
Bow of hand.